To reconvene.
You have that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded by.
Oh, me?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then the first item on the agenda is public appearances. And are there any public appearances? Seeing none, we'll go to a special item, the election of the school board clerk.
And I don't know how you want to move it, but we do have a guest from out of town tonight. And there is supposed to be some freezing stuff, and I just wondered if we wanted to move her up.
No, I don't think we do. I think we're set with that.
No?
Yeah, because we're going to move along. I mean, I'm not sure what you're.
Why don't we do that?
Hope it doesn't go to the third ballot.
I mean, well.
She's after open enrollment.
We're thinking this one. We can move that up. Yeah, we could move that up, but we're not moving up to now, is what I'm saying.
This has to take place. We have to have a clerk if we're going to take action on that.
I'm just asking.
So if you're jumping ahead to new business, if we wanted to move that up.
Before we started into the agenda, I wanted to ask that.
I am not seeing anything on here that should require much discussion, but if we want to, I don't know, if you have objection to moving that up? We could move it up to after correspondence and announcements.
Yeah, I mean, Dean and I are going to do a little report. We're going to do open enrollment.
That's fine.
Yeah, there's no objection from anybody else. We can move item L1 up to after following correspondence and announcements.
Thank you.
Okay, so the election of the school board clerk with the resignation of Lynn Ellington. We do need to elect a new clerk. That is a statutory office that we are required to have, and we'll need it to sign forms that we may approve in a few minutes. So we can have nominations verbally or by written ballot, whatever you prefer.
Just do the ballot. So much easier, then we can count the numbers and everybody that's on the ballot.
And the policy says if there's a request, that's what we do. So.
I apologize if you didn't nominate.
So I think we have plenty, so we just pick one to use for, to write a nomination down. So this first ballot will be for a nomination.
Do we have to nominate somebody?
No.
No, you don't. If you want to, somebody does.
I want to keep my ballot.
What you do with the ballot is anybody that's on the ballot gets nominated.
That's right.
Right, that's correct. So do we have some down there?
Can anybody hold two offices?
No.
No.
Can we extend this here?
Can you hold three?
So did you make?
How many more do you want?
Oh, yeah.
Jeff? No? Okay.
Just read one at a time? Or should we just give the total?
See if there are two people or three people.
This is just a nomination.
This is just a nomination.
Nominations, right. So we just need to know not how many, just who has been nominated.
Well, we have a primary.
Everybody nominated themselves.
So we have three board members who have been nominated for the position of clerk. Peter Sobel's been nominated, Jeff Simpson's been nominated, and Dean Bowles has been nominated.
And I should probably explain one thing, that this position will only be for February and March, and April, February, March and April, because after the new board election, we'll be reorganizing and having new officers elected. So Dean, I'm sorry, you had a con.
I would like to be asked you not to vote for me.
Okay, so we don't need a primary, we have two.
And I withdraw my nomination.
Okay, and if people do need to be available during all three of those months, that's my only concern.
Oh, are you available in all three?
So I don't know. It should be.
Because it's for signing, and I mean, it has to be, I'm just, I don't know, is that?
Really?
Yeah, how available?
Well, you have to be able to come in and sign.
How often?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Right, what was you saying?
Two meetings. I mean, I don't know, there's two meetings, I don't know if there'd be other, what other things. There are things to sign at every meeting, or every business meeting, so for sure the second meeting, possibly the first meeting.
Right, you both might not be at one.
Well, if a clerk is not at a meeting, then the expectation is they'll come to the office to sign the appropriate documents.
Okay.
Or we could take him somewhere, so, okay. Okay, so given that now, what were you saying, Peter? I'm sorry.
I was doing my, I would ask for you to throw my nomination.
Okay, well then, by, could I request by acclamation that we elect Jeff Simpson as our clerk?
Cool.
Somebody want to make a motion to that effect? Dean? Jessica made a motion.
Second. My second.
Okay. Start that off, Joyce. So it's moved and seconded that we unanimously elect Jeff Simpson as our clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So I guess I could just take ballots, but it seems, no, we don't have to see each other. All right, well, thank you. So Jeff, get your pen out for tonight.
All right.
Congratulations.
You're going to start, have to start bringing a pen.
You get to be listed third.
Joyce will provide you with one, I believe. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Before we get a motion, I think Dan wanted to make an announcement.
Yeah, I would like to recognize publicly, one of the items on the consent agenda is our retirements tonight, and on there, you're asked to approve the retirement request of Mark Scullion, who has in the process of completing 23 years of service in the district. I would like to publicly thank Mark for his service, and in the short time I've had an opportunity to work with them, and for the many years prior to that as well. And we talk about, you know, having people that we have that are dedicated, have pride in the district. Mark epitomizes that, so Mark, thank you very much for your work.
Again, when you had concerns whether they were busing, shoveling.
Facility, we went out and looked at every single piece of property we owned when one of the superintendents first came. He was always there to answer your question, he was always there to have a conversation with you, and he's so strongly supported by his family, so we're very, very lucky.
Thank you.
Well, and I'm sure we'll be, well, I'm not sure, but I'm hoping that you'll allow us to do some kind of recognition later in the year, at the end of the year.
I don't know if they want.
We'll talk about it.
We're doing roast. That would be fun. That would be fun.
Roast would be good. Dean?
I think, I think earlier today, as chair of the Facilities Long Range Planning Committee, I did forward the email to you, Jared, did I not, asking whether Scullion is going to be around for a while? And you said he'll be around full-time, even after he's gone.
That's right.
Yeah, we'll be able to pick on him anyway. That'll be good.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, seriously, thank you. For 23 years, it really has. Thank you.
Okay, with that, then I would ask for a motion to, for approval of the consent agenda.
It's a move.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then correspondence and announcements, and.
Principal Paul Gross, I believe, has an announcement he'd like to make this evening.
Is this the one we do not want to hear?
The other one we don't want to hear.
Do we have to, can we vote on whether or not we're going to listen to this?
I don't want to make a consent statement you don't want to hear. I do want to with the retirement of Mike Stassi, he's our head football coach, I do want to just say a couple of things publicly in terms of appreciation for Mike's work. So my good fortune to work with him for 11 years of his 16-year, and you guys have seen the accolades and the things in the paper, which are all well-deserved. In those 16 years, 10 conference championships, I'm a little biased, but I think in one of the best football conferences in the state, two times to Camp Randall, and my first year here was the time we got second, but I think one of his best coaching runs ever, we beat three unbeaten teams in the playoffs before we got second at the state championship, and then, of course, recently to come home with a gold ball. I read, as he was Coach of the Year last year, I read too, that just in terms of percentages in winning in the state of Wisconsin in the last decade, we're in the top two or three winningest programs in the state. If you talked to Mike about that, he would tell you that the winning is a secondary goal, and that become, that comes in the way of doing everything else right, and that's, I think, what's made him so exceptional. I really appreciate from Principal's lens, having him as a role model for all of our younger coaches. I spent a lot of time on the practice field, out in the summertime, watched him work, and, you know, he never motivates through intimidation, you never see him lose his composure, use poor language, every kid feels like they're contributing, and he's just really, really a strong role model and always has been. And so, from my lens, really appreciate that. He's always taking the blame for anything that's not going well, and then giving credit to everybody else when things do go well. When I got here 11 years ago, the very first student I met, I think it was, it might have been my first day, it was July 1st or 2nd, or my second day, was a football player. And he came in because he'd had a mishap in the spring, and I think it was a grade mishap, and was ineligible for the couple of games the next fall. And I won't get into what position this football player was in, because I remember clearly what he did, but what position he was in the field. But anyway, we spoke for a while, and so happens, then the first teacher I met was Mike shortly thereafter in my office, saying, "Don't you dare let him off the hook, he needs to take care of his accountability, and we'll take him back on the field when we get him." And I knew right away that he was a guy that held to his values. So as a principal, it's great having somebody, you know, high expectations for kids academically, behaviorally, in the community, and when you have someone like that setting a tone for your school every year in the fall, it just makes a huge difference in your environment. You know the players are going to be respectful when they come in, and it kind of just sets the tone for the whole year. So I very much appreciate that about him. Obviously, coming back from, as a graduate from here, and having great leadership, bringing home a gold ball, and I think what really epitomized things for me was when we brought the gold ball home, and I know I shared this with you publicly, shortly after that, we received a letter in the mail from the officiating crew, saying, "It's one of the classiest group of coaches and athletes we'd ever officiated." And so that kind of just epitomizes how Mike did things, he did things the right way. So anyways, he's got a great experience for countless players, he's built a successful program for us and left us with a great tradition, so we'll miss him dearly. I did try and talk him out of it, I want to say that publicly, but obviously wish him the best, and that's very big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and, you know, there isn't much you can add to what Paul just said, but as a parent, whose kids oped soccer and swam, when Mike Stassi came to the football program, over half of our previous football team had quit and hadn't played for at least two years. And he came back and rebuilt this team, he rebuilt the structure, and his driving force, his driving force, was go home and tell your family you love them. He would say that every day, and it was such a huge part of what he built. We're going to miss him.
That we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Does anyone else have correspondence and announcements? Okay, then, moving on to, we are going to then move on to new business, item one, which is discussion and possible approval of a resolution authorizing borrowing not to exceed $2 million, and providing for the issuance and sale of taxable general obligation promissory notes therefore. And we have Michelle Weber, from PMA.
Thank you, I will be brief, just to give you a little introduction of this resolution that's before you for approval this evening. What's coming around the table is just a timeline to give you some feel for what steps are, not only that you're doing tonight, but also that are ahead of you for this particular financing. So it starts with this evening's board meeting, which you have before you, the resolution that is authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2 million for the purpose of funding OPEB expenditures. This is a Fund 38 borrowing, so it's under revenue limits, and as such, once this resolution is passed, there'll be a notice to electors, which is an attachment to the resolution that will be published in the official newspaper of the district, and the 30-day petition period will begin. This is the same process you followed on other non-referendum debt that you issued for energy efficiency projects, for example. After the 30-day petition period is sunset, we can close on the $2 million notes. We can, we can sell the $2 million of notes prior to that. So the timeline you're looking at is probably the very quickest, this would all roll out together. So tonight's authorization starts that 30-day period as early as the February 25th board meeting, we could go ahead and lock in interest rates on the financing itself. The financing will take a two-step process, we have to issue short-term notes if we eventually want to get to a 15- or 20-year amortization for this $2 million, which is the goal of the district, and kind of talking with administration on how that looks. So the very next step you would take after this could come as early as February 25th if you choose to, and that would be locking in the interest rate on the short-term notes. We would then refinance those short-term notes at the very earliest, again, would be the March board meeting with long-term financing, a 15- or 20-year amortization for the $2 million. We also have another refinancing to take a look at, and we would do that alongside the $2 million of this OPEB borrowing. That refinancing is for the 2005 bonds in Fund 39, which currently have savings about, of about a half million dollars if we were to refinance those. So would make sense to do it all together, so as to not incur any additional costs, so we're, we'll sit on the refinancing essentially until that $2 million's ready to be taken out. Just as a reminder, if we do go ahead with this refinancing, it'll be the fifth one we've done in as many years, and would bring total savings of all the refinancings we've done to about $2.8 million. So chipping away at it in this low-interest rate environment, and would hope to continue to do so. So that gives you an idea of some of the steps ahead and how it relates to what you have before you for approval tonight.
So as Michelle had stated, that this is part of Fund 38, and it's part of our OPEB, that we had originally approved the concept of the new teacher retirement, and we knew we had to borrow up to $2 million. I do want to make sure that everybody's aware that it is a couple of step process. We have to do short-term notes, because it's an OPEB, and that's first date statute, to get us to then going out to bonds and refinancing that to 15 to 20 years. So that's part of the reason we're bringing it now. We are still working on the trust document development, but no money will be put into any trust until the board has approved the final documentation, and the trust committee has directed myself and the district of where that money goes. And I want to make sure that I say that publicly, because I think that's very important, because this is related to our OPEB, and as we talked about this, we talked about the importance of having a trust document, a trust committee, and making sure that we are investing the money in appropriate places to be able to have long-term success for our teacher retirement plan. So.
Are there any comments, questions? All right, could I have a motion then, for, for approval of the resolution authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed $2 million, and providing for the issuance and sale of taxable general obligation promissory notes therefore? So you're moving approval of the resolution as presented? Dean?
I'll move for approval of the borrowing. Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then, I would like to take another item out of order, because we do have another guest since we started this, and we will move up to, under unfinished business, item two, discussion and possible approval of Board Policy 345.6, the high school graduation requirements.
Okay. All right, this policy is a second reading, requiring the personal financial literacy as a high school graduation requirement. But before we get into the actual policy, we would like to talk just a moment again about the background and some of the support we received, besides the work that the boards committee had done, and the board itself, but also administratively, and we have a special guest with us tonight, Dave Mansell from the State of Wisconsin Department of Financial Institutions is with us, and he and his institution were behind the grant that we received to help support this. And so, and Andrew Bedell and Paul Gross had, you know, presented earlier as well, so I don't know if you would like to say a few words, or anything, Andrew, as well, that you'd like to present?
Just, just very briefly, I'd like to, I'd like to thank the Department of Financial Institutions and Mr. Mansell for joining us tonight, and for making the grant opportunity available, and thank Dr. Gross and his staff for reviewing, reviewing, with a lot of input from community, reviewing the need for personal financial literacy in our curriculum, and supporting that requirement proposal, bringing that forward. I'm very excited to say that pending your approval, the college and career readiness now includes personal financial literacy as an important part of what we offer our students in the district. So thank you for the opportunity to bring that forward, and thank you to Mr. Mansell and the department for the support through the grant process as well.
And I just want to thank the department again. I mean, part of the way we heard about this was at a presentation, a Wisconsin School Board Association presentation, and we watched this, and everybody got so excited, and it was so great. And so then these guys had already had it on the agenda, but we weren't really aware of it, and we understood the grant process, but it's something they've been working on forever, and this really gave us the jumpstart to be able to do it. And in the past two weeks, I talked to probably over 50 people, school board members in Milwaukee, and then staff here, and parents at Christmas parties, they are so excited about us doing this. This is, they are just really excited, so put us on the map. Thank you.
Just a question, you handed out this, this document of research evidence here, that says financial literacy charges don't make any difference, or much little difference, is that true?
That's from Gross.
I was going to say.
I counted that with a.
There is more research.
University of Wisconsin study, and, you know, Paul balances this, but, you know.
Is this your work, Paul?
A professor taught me to do deep research, but there's a caveat in there, did you read the whole thing?
Have to read the whole thing, yeah, that's true.
Small footnote?
Yeah.
We're going to have an outstanding program, so it will make a difference.
62,000 University of Wisconsin students in a study last year, found that this improved their financial literacy.
I believe in education, so.
Go for it. I like the W piece, for real. And Paul has been very realistic about how you have to do it, and how you have to bring it forward to make it successful. So he's, he wanted that to be a part of what we understood.
Because I just heard the PMA lady tell us that if we give her money, she makes big money for us.
Well, she cuts our debt.
That has been our experience, actually. You're saying we're gullible?
I think every financial advisor will tell you that.
But that's pretty impressive, that the department comes to this and asks.
Looking forward to it.
Hopefully the Herald will get that.
So, given that, would someone like to make a motion?
Oh, I'd like to, I'd love to make that one. I was so excited about it.
So there you go, do you want to, you want, or you want me to read it for you?
Yes.
Okay. I would request a motion to approve the revised policy 345.16, high school graduation requirements as presented.
So.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward, and we do appreciate it.
Susan, you don't suppose that somebody would take financial literacy and not take advanced physics?
Yeah, it's going to be a balance, there's some things. You're doing your life.
They might be.
Guess what, you can take both.
I know, I know. Something has to give.
Who did that?
We do have staff that are very excited about teaching this, so I was only, I was not totally jesting about that, I think we will have a good program.
And we would talk about this later on the agenda, but maybe we want to update as it starts to formulate about what's going to be included in that process, it's a way to get it out in the community. I'll do that on the agenda at the end.
I was going to say that would be more appropriate. Okay, so now we are going to go back to following our order, so we'll go back up to item a, administrative reports.
And I have no administrative report tonight.
All right, then we'll move on to board reports, and the first board report is the Monona Grove Education Foundation report, Susan.
And maybe Dan can help me with that just a little bit, because I had to leave early. But the foundation closed the grant application period for 2015 on December 31st, 2014. The review committee had effectively, as of that meeting, accepted three grants. They accepted a grant for Alder Leopold, Model United Nations, and do you remember what that third one was? And see, it's on the agenda, so, and we don't have minutes, so.
I think we'll bring them all back.
We'll bring them all back.
We're always getting the power report.
The other thing is, they have three more that they're very excited and interested in, that they just needed more information, more specifics, more about how they're going to use the money, so that's going back. And then there were two that didn't appear to meet the policy requirements for the educational grants, and that happens, and that's why they've written the policy, they say, "Well, this needs, this is a curriculum base, and you need to go this way." So that's effectively what they've, they've done and how they're working on that. So that's, here's one of the things that was really neat. So one of the teachers wrote a grant to basically have science education at Alder Leopold, and that meant a field trip by this class to Alder Leopold and some integrated study work. And one of the things we talked about, oh, Andrew's not right here this minute, was doing this in a way that we write the grant, and it can still be a pilot project, but having it come more administratively from curriculum, so that all the kindergarteners can do it, or whatever the classes, all the first graders can have this opportunity. So the, the foundation grant group actually turned around and authorized more money than was requested to offer that opportunity, is that my understanding? You were on the committee, so you would know.
Yeah, so the original grant request was written by kindergarten teachers from Taylor Prairie School, and the discussion was, well, is this something that the Winnetka kindergarten class could also benefit from? So I did have a conversation with Principal Schrader, and yes, they, we are going to accept that opportunity, and they'll all have the same opportunity as well for their students, so, yeah.
Well, and it was neat that the foundation, and we've kind of talked about this before, the foundation just took that initiative. That was impressive, so.
Okay, any questions? All right, then the next item is the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee.
Sure, let me pass out my written report. I still have this habit of writing term papers.
It's okay, I'm still quasi-paper, quasi.
There you go. Take half and pass the report. There's, pass one more. I put this together this afternoon, Dan, from the, from the work that we did the other, the other day, the last piece. Just to kind of bring you all up to date, I think, I think the batting order is, is set for where we're going, we just have to have the game start. But meetings, the long-range, the LRFPC, the consultants told us to take out schools, so that shortened it by one letter. Meetings, we have our first meeting scheduled for February 3rd, and then we, the rest of them are scheduled, there's two a month from there on out. These meetings don't include any, any staff or public information meetings if they come about or are necessary. The charge to the committee, I've summarized, thank you, Susan, for suggestion of changing the charge thing, the charge is very general, the study, report findings, make recommendations for the long-range plan for the district. But attached to this, I have a working agenda, which, which we'll maybe add a piece to, or we may not focus on some pieces of it, but I think this will be at least the starting work order, and you can see that, that ranges all the ones, and I reported on those last time. Currently, the committee is composed of 10 members, including five from Monona and five from Cottage Grove, including two school board members, Jeff Simpson and I, and, and two persons closely associated with the schools, real estate, planning, construction, and that is attached. And we, and after meeting with the consultants, they, they did ask about Business Chamber of Commerce, we did not have that on, and so Dan has been given the assignment to try to bring one of those in.
I have a recommendation, I'll show it to you later.
Okay, that's great. And so I, I think it's a pretty well-balanced committee. When we meet, we'll talk to each other and see if they think anyone else needs to be added. I was hoping to keep it to eight, now we're up to, we're up to 10. Enrollment projections, we're going to be utilizing the work of Andrevall and Associates regarding enrollment projections, growth, and land use. I think their work is well-done, and the consultants that we brought in the other day, and I'll talk about that in a second, also feel like it's going to be very reliable One thing we did, which is probably new for some board members and those in the audience, we did deal with, we interviewed four consultant groups, that deal in the, if you hyphenate we did deal with, we interviewed four consultant groups, that deal in the, if you hyphenate them all, facilities assessment, planning, design, capacity, this whole array of things, in, including the public relations end of things, and administration boiled it down to representatives from Hoffman, Findorf, Bray, and CG Schmidt and Uhwin, I think I pronounced that correctly, and the, we interviewed them, Susan and Jeff and I, and I, I think we had a very good consensus that we would go with CG Schmidt and Uhwin, and I think it was due to their greater emphasis on master planning, building assessment, capacity utilization, and the community engagement piece, and not the design construction, because that was, that not our central purpose, and that would come later, if any. And is that a fair rationale, Susan and Jeff? I think so. So, we met with their, a team of their, four of them, and I was impressed, they have kind of a specialist in each of those areas, I enumerated there, and the, we, we met with them yesterday, and they had their specialty in master, master planning, community facilities, capacity and utilization, community engagement, and plan the scope of work, and they came in pretty well-prepared already, and we talked about the meeting times, some of the work of our first meeting, and, and that, that sort of thing. And I think we're, we haven't done any work yet, but we're off, I think we're off to a pretty good, to a pretty good start with, with that particular group. And I think that the discussions around buildings, and we also, I think I, to get it on this paper, I did not go, we gave a little background of where the district has been on some of the buildings, some of the concerns, the referendum experiences and so forth, and so I think, I think at this point, we're ready to have the group meet and get rolling. So, any questions? Yes, Jessica?
I was reading through your second page, but your working agenda, and I have a question about number eight, and whereas I, I understand the role that that would play, that issue placed in the facility conversation, I think it also extends beyond the facility committee, and I'm hoping that looking at grade alignments is also, you know, a topic that will be covered in a, in different arenas as well.
The grade alignment?
Right.
That's part of the work agenda.
Yeah.
And I, I think one thing that might help with, what might be your concern is that when you look at the committee list, you don't see staff members on there, and my understanding was that, as we get to various topics, we will be calling them in, so relative to that, for example, we would certainly involve elementary principals and staff. When we get, when we're talking about athletics, we're going to certainly be involving Jack Schreiner, ugly Jack Frost, but, you know, different people, so, so there will be bigger conversations, and then the whole board will be voting on whatever comes up, too.
It seems like that's one of those things that, you know, deciding on, on removing a grade from a building, or reconfiguring other buildings to have a different grade structure in each one, I think is a conversation out, that is much larger than just a facilities issue, is my opinion.
Yeah, it is.
So, I want to make sure that it's being covered in other.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I, obviously that grows out of the prospect of baking room and racial drumming. What do you do with the fifth grade? We have, we have pre-K five in Monona, and you have the, like, different alignments at Cottage Grove, and, and that will have to be, I think that has to be probably very early on that discussion, but I think that, as Susan mentioned, we'll have varying combinations of staff study groups on some of these issues, and, because we can't go very far in where we're going unless we know the grades and, and how schools' space that we have can be utilized as well. But we hope to meet, we hope to have the group meet in every school at least once, get a, that's why I was kind of kidding Mark, we'd hope to have Mark and the consultants and the spatialization people do their work ahead of time, so the committee can get, when they walk through the building, you can have the consultants and Mark talking to them as we, as we walk, and, and see the capacity of the building, not only, we had to caution the consultants, and they know this, too, because it's very easy to say, X number of students, you have so many square feet for a student, and you have plenty of space, but depends how space is used, and this group is pretty savvy on that, and we'll have good dialogue, I think, with staff. I think that's fair.
Yep.
And I'm, we're just a committee, so we're gonna come out of this with a recommendation, not actions.
Right, exactly, yeah, it's totally, it's advisory.
I understand all that, I'm not, I'm just saying that, you know, when you start going down a particular path, like, you know, this is an expectation that, say, for example, we're going to move a grade out of a building and accommodate it, a different one, that's gonna send you down a different path than, than not having that decision in, at the beginning.
And if you wanted to go, if you want, the question will be, if you wanted to go pre-K five in Cottage Grove, are these schools suitable in the present, and what's the cost? What's the busing cost, and the transportation cost, and that sort of thing?
I have the same concern as Jessica, and I share that, and I appreciate, because we didn't see anything written on the plan, and I appreciate you elaborating on that, that you are gonna be involving the staff and administration. Kind of the past, we've done some committees, like the handbook, you know, we're sitting there and we brought a principal in, but it would have been really valuable to have had that administrative piece, I'm just saying, so I appreciate that, that's part of the plan.
Sure, and a couple of comments on that. First of all, when we were putting together the list of the committee members and our working document, we were concentrating on the community members that were being employed, and somehow, we inadvertently left off, we do have an administrator on the committee, Renee Tennant is, is on the committee as well, so. On the official list that Joyce has, we haven't corrected, now we've cut that today. Yeah, but, but in addition, as has been stated, without question, we have a ton of expertise, people we need to get information from as we go along, you know, teachers, support staff, administrators, and, and that's something the committee will decide about how we'll solicit that input, but we certainly need to, and then where did the board come in?
I think a lot of it's gonna come in through central office administration, it's gonna come through Renee, and it's gonna come through, the consultants have made a commitment to, to work with school staff as appropriate to their various areas.
So, what I'd like to make, just wanted to comment, the other key piece of this, I think is really important, is the communication about that, and one of the things that, that we're excited about with CG Schmidt, they have a full-time communications person, Sarah Dunn fills that role, and even, we are, the original planning meeting, or initial planning meeting, as Dean mentioned, yesterday, today, Joyce was working regularly with Sarah on her first press release to get out, as well as additional communication that we'll keep, we're gonna have all the work of the committee as it goes along available on our website, and talk about where we're gonna communicate, so having that assistance, I think is huge, and we'll have regular updates on it.
Well, and at WSB, I went to three different workshops, presented by at least two of the people on this list, and CG Schmidt's presentation with the district that they were presenting it was, and the process that they used, I thought it might be helpful to at least see what they're, what they're doing and what supplies. It was excellent, it was just excellent. It was really good, and actually, you know, I'm not so sure, it wouldn't be nice to have them do a similar presentation in this district as they get started, so that people are interested in coming in and seeing the kind of process they use, they could see it before you all get started, but again, it's just another thing to do, but.
I think that's a good idea, at the, at the appropriate time, maybe, when, after a while, when they hear they're in, working in the schools and that sort of thing, it might be, it might, here's what we're doing, and I think it might work better someplace during the process than up front as a kind of a academic presentation.
But all of their people spoke, and it was with the district, that was pretty tough on accountability, it was a good presentation.
Good. Thank you. And we look forward to that first meeting, I mean, first meeting of the whole committee is coming up.
Oh, and the only thing I wanted to say was that I was impressed, that it looks to me like almost fifty percent of the committee are, have children in the district right now, at least it's close. Just looking at those numbers.
That was, that was intentional.
That's a nice mix with at least two elected community leaders.
Right. Okay, then on to unfinished business, and the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of the 2015, 2016 open enrollment recommendations, which were presented to us at the last meeting. Dan, do you want to say?
So, we, we ended up the discussion, so the formal recommendation is the same as what we had in the initial proposal at the previous meeting, and that's, you see, there's several attached documents, and the one with the actual recommendation is the first one, right? Okay. And so, is it two grade levels, we're recommending, oh, the board approve ten seats at 4K.
Forty.
And forty, I may dock it here, and forty seats at ninth grade.
So, does someone care to make that motion?
Some.
Okay, so it's been moved that we approve the 2015, 16, open enrollment recommendations as presented, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then we are down to the second item of new business, which is discussion and possible approval of a contract for educational technology coordinator. Get to that part of my agenda here. Could I have a motion for approval of a 2014, 15 educational technology coordinator contract for Bill Herman as presented?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then we will move down to item three, which is discussion and appropriate action regarding filling school board vacancy. If you want to drop that.
Sure, I'll start with the one. And so you do have a policy 132 that provides guidelines, and when you have a board vacancy, and it states that the remaining members of the board by majority of all shall appoint a qualified replacement as soon as reasonably possible after vacancy occurs, and then the appointee will hold office until his successor is elected and takes office. Well, that successor will take office in April, this upcoming April 11th election, and so what you need to decide as a board, when we talk about reasonably possible, is it reasonably possible to appoint someone between now and then, and if so, do you want someone to be able to serve for one or two meetings, if you even can do it by then? So I think you are within the letter of your policy, you may make the determination you can't reasonably poss, you know, appoint someone in that time, and you could just remain, leave it unfilled until the next election.
And I think when we didn't, well, we included the policy on filling vacancies, there's also a rule that requires that you advertise for the opening in the Herald Independent, that you have the process that we use before, calling people in for interviews, that kind of thing, so I guess, when I was looking at that, I was thinking we're really into, well into February before we would even possibly take an action, so then you're bringing somebody in for two months, two board meetings, actually, to vote, and pretty hard to get anybody up to speed on what we're doing, so I think my personal thought would be that we not fill the vacancy for the remaining time, since we have an election coming up so, so soon, but, moving here, what the rest of you think?
I have board policy 132.
Correct.
That's July 18, 2012, is that the updated one?
Right, and that's the policy, we didn't include the rule, but yeah, that's the policy.
Well, third paragraph says, "When a vacancy occurs in the office of a board member who is in the last year of his or her term, the successor shall be elected at the next spring election," which it seems that fits, that.
It does.
That fits Lionel to the T.
It does.
So it seems to me your recommendation and the board policy coincide.
And we had some discussion about what, how the policy was, if you read the whole policy, well, this is one of the issues with policy and the way it's written, because we, we stood around and thought, oh yeah, we don't have to do this, because there's that sentence, but it starts out saying that we shall fill the vacancy as soon as possible, then these three paragraphs about when the vacancy occurs are taken directly from statute, which gives, which just spells out, if you choose to appoint someone, they cannot serve beyond, like in this case, if we appointed someone, they could not serve beyond the next election. If the vacancy occurs after the spring election, before the last Tuesday, they shall be elected, you know, so in other words, it spells out, when you do your appointment, this is telling you when they'll serve, at least that's how I read it, but there were other people who read it the way you did. So I guess I, we could have a motion to waive the requirement to appoint someone, or we could have a motion to simply leave the seat vacant until, I think we have to take some action to leave the seat vacant until the election, that's the way I would read it. Jessica, and then Dean again.
I'm making a motion to leave one mile seat vacant until the election.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded that we leave the vacancy vacant until the election. Is there any other discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Then we are on to the future agenda items, and one that I wanted to mention is that we will, those of us who attended the state convention, will plan to report on that at the first February meeting, we didn't have it on this agenda, and we, so while it's still fresh in your minds, if there were things you wanted to report on, maybe jot down a few notes so that you compare it to them, and then otherwise, I don't know if anyone had anything else they want to mention?
Oh, just, just getting an update on the plan for the, about the financial literacy.
Oh, as that course gets.
As it becomes a requirement, that's something I think the community is gonna want to know about, and it may be that people stop us and ask us about it. I mean, I've already had staff stop me and say, I think it's great you're doing that. So, parents are gonna be hearing about that, and again.
I think once the course is developed, that would make, would be fine, to have a brief report on what's in it. We don't, yeah, we do that.
You can just.
Typically, typically, we have that sort of, well, we have summaries when we approve courses, and we didn't exactly have that in the script, so that's, you could put that down as a question. If I'm hearing what other, I guess I'd like to ask, is that something other people would like to hear about, because that.
Well, I, I've suggested, using the newspaper better than we do, by, and I've mentioned to you, Dan, that if you have somebody sit down with this new editor, he writes very thorough, substantial stories, and if whoever the instructor is gonna be, or Andrew, could sit down and talk about this, or Paul, and I think you'll get a very good story out of it.
That's, that's a good idea. In addition to that, though, I guess I would like a sense from other board members, whether you would like to have this as an agenda item in the future?
Sure.
Can I have a thumbs up if you kind of, just to get an idea? Okay?
I'm not clear what it is you want to report on.
Well, I think, I think you're just saying you'd like to see sort of a course.
So when parents ask us about what the course is gonna be like and why we're doing it, why we support it, it's nice to have X, Y, Z three lines.
But, just a minute, I think we, we did talk about some of that in the passage, but I, I thought what I heard you saying was you would like just a little bit more of a course description, what kinds of things are included in it. Is that correct? So, is, am I hearing that other people would like to hear the same thing? Because we don't do this for every course that we approve, that's why I'm just asking.
Absolutely.
Be interesting to have it as information, whenever it's ready, not when our agenda's out.
Right, right, when it's ready, which may be after the summer, because, I mean, I don't know what, I forget what the plan is for when it'll be ready.
To me, the difference in this course is it's a graduation.
It's a requirement, correct.
That's what's different, and that's what people are gonna ask about. Why did you require that?
Yeah, well, you don't need to argue the point, I, I just wanted a sense of, I just wanted to find out if other people were interested, they said they are, so we'll put it down. Okay? End of story. Anybody else said anything? All right, then future meeting dates are here, except the first one, policy committee is going to be changed.
Yes, to Tuesday.
The 10th, okay, so it'll be February 10.
Right.
Okay, at the same time, and then the rest of the dates are on here, and they are as scheduled, February 11th for the committee of the whole, and February 20th. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, I think it was the majority, even though two of you aren't fans.
I'm ready to go home.
Renee. So, that's why I, the way that about changing the.